Good evening. Welcome to the March 16th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, and West Sacramento Redevelopment Successor Agency, and West Sacramento Financing Authority. As we do each meeting, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, which this evening will be led by Christina Clem, the Regional Representative from the AARP. Welcome Christina.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council met earlier this evening in closed session to consult with our legal counsel. No action was taken. That brings us to Item 1A, which is Presentations by the Public on Matters Not on the Agenda but Within the Jurisdiction of the Council. And just as a reminder, the council is prohibited from discussing issues not on the agenda brought to us at this time. According to state law, items must be first noticed on the agenda before any discussion or action. We ask that if you wish to speak, you fill out a card that's located near the front door and give that to our clerk before the consent agenda begins, if you'd like to speak on an item from the consent agenda, or before the conclusion of staff reports for regular agenda items. We also ask for, that you address us for three minutes to the council, and ask for decorum and respect in the chambers. So we have two requests to speak under Item 1A. First is Mr. Kelly Smith.
Good evening.
This is my first time ever coming.
Okay, welcome.
To speak, so, actually, the first time that I came was when you were honoring Bill Lowell. Let's see if you guys know him. So, actually, being there, that inspired me to actually write a poem, if I can read that for you guys. That's okay. All right. "I moved here to West Sac pretty recently. A bicycle rider, I decided to be. Mountain, a road bike, it's really a lot of fun, but while riding, I've found, there's more to be done. Safety is my thought, and I desire to increase it. On riding South River Road, a problem has beset it. With darkness and shadows, I created my plea to bring out the light continually. While this request, you may already be aware, being a community steward, this problem I bear. Please take a drive, and look for yourselves, and watch for the bikers, that they may fare well. Thank you for your time, and I bid you adieu, being thankful for the city and all that you do." And, basically, what it was is, I moved here recently in October. I drive River Road, South River Road, all the time. There's a section in between the 80, Business 80, and Mike McGowan Bridge, you guys are probably aware, super dark. And so, on the curves, right underneath the bridge, it's just really hard to see. And so, being a biker, also there's no signage for the freeway, for getting off, like, getting on the freeway. So, people are kind of distracted, trying to figure out what's going on, that kind of thing. So, just as a heads up, definitely need some more lighting in that particular area. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks for bringing this to our attention, too, and for the poem. Next, Mr. Mark Saban.
Mayor Pro Tem, and Councilman. My name is Mark Saban. I'm the new Communications Officer for Lake Washington Sailing Club. We have our facilities at your port. On April Saturday, April 30th of this year, we're having an open house, another one, our annual open house. Per our bylaws, we are to promote the sport of small boat sailing and small sailboat racing. And per our agreement with the Port of West Sacramento, we provide sailing instruction to the City of West Sacramento Parks and Recreation. We feel that our outreach should be increased in the City of West Sacramento and the rest of Yolo County. That's why I'm here, to help promote our open house on April 30th. Your port and its various activities are a hidden gem in this area. The sailing is the best in the region, with steady afternoon winds up from the delta. Our club was founded in 1933, and is the oldest in Northern California, except for some San Francisco Bay clubs. The difference is, we have fresh water. I'm doing what I can to get this promoted. It should turn out great. We have scheduled Channel 31 and Channel 40 to do some on-air snippets just before. Your local papers, the Sun and Newsletter are going to run some little articles. Your Communications and Media Officer, I think his name is Mr. Paul Ostley, is excited about that, and he's adding it to the city calendar and city highlights. It's going to be run in the Sacramento Inside Publications, all around Sacramento. I'm going to try to get a static display of a little sunfish sailboat in front of, at the River Cats, for a couple hours before a game, to try to promote it that way. I gave you guys some open house flyers. I have, I have three more, if anybody wants one. And, let's see. You, your families and friends are invited to our open house. Through the website, you can learn about the club, its activities, or contact any of our board members or myself as Communications Officer. I will report back afterwards and let you know how it all went. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Saban. All right, any questions? All right. That brings us to Item 1B, Council Communications.
Oh, let's see.
Mr. Kristoff?
Couple weeks, February 19th, we had a LAFCO Priority Setting Session. And, a couple good things came out of it. I think one of the major components for us LAFCO members is, we're looking for grant funding for some of the shared services that we're looking at doing. And, that, quite frankly, that recommendation came from our city manager, who was there. So, I think that that'll be an area that LAFCO looks at as we go through these shared services, and see if there is a way in which we can find some grant funding to go along with the various programs that shared services might get into and endeavor with, as far as all the different cities in Yolo County, plus Yolo County. So, looking forward to our next meeting, to see if we can flush some of that out. And I'll report back to the council when we do. One of the other areas is West Sacramento Flood Control, WSAFC. We met last Thursday, and we are still in the process of negotiation, negotiating with property owners for lands and easement areas, and properties that we need, so that we can complete the levy system that we need to do for 200-year flood protection. Some of the real exciting news coming along with this is, we're moving forward with the GRR. That's a General Evaluation Report. It's required by the Corps, required by FEMA. And also, we're moving forward with the Chief's Report. Once the GRR is done, then the Chief's Report goes and analyzes all of the different things that have gone on with the GRR. And why that is so important is because we need to get on the Word of Bill. The Word of Bill is the funding mechanism from the federal government to assist with the various levy projects, and monies that we've spent, and future monies. And, so we're looking forward to all of that. And, I have to say, everything really looks very well. And so, we should certainly have a lot of federal help. And we're just sort of holding our breath until we can get through the process of the GRR, get through the process of the Chief's Report, and get through the process of the Word of Bill. But, we're certainly looking forward to going to, back to Washington DC, and talking with the various Corps people, flood people, and people that assist us with funding and building and engineering of flood control. So, looking forward to all of that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kristoff. I also have a couple reports from Item 1B. The Water Resources Association Board met this past Monday, and we adopted a resolution supporting a basin boundary modification request. And that relates to the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. It pulls Yolo County together, as a county, instead of being split into three pieces. This may also be coming forward to the city for support, so we'll stay tuned on that. We also learned that Yolo County and several other agencies are applying for a stormwater plan, planning grant. And finally, there will be workshops held in Woodland, Winters, and Clarksville, coming up the next March 29th, 30th, and 31st, on the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act implementation. And then, also on Monday, the Yolo County Transportation District met, and we received the audit that SECOG has asked all local transportation districts to undergo. We heard about passenger fare changes at RT, and its relation to Yolo bus fares. We also received an update on a process for addressing transit services strategies for West Sacramento, and both Director Anbia and Senior Analyst Cortez from our staff were in attendance. And we also heard a status report on Golden One Center Transit Planning. So they're getting ready for the arena opening downtown, and how our transit district will be dealing with some of the traffic issues and parking. And then finally, the Port Commission met earlier tonight, and we approved a license agreement with West Sacramento Neighbors Fair for a radio station antenna. We approved site improvement expenditures, and we also approved a consideration of a 25-year lease agreement with the city. So those are all from Item 1B. We have no action on Item 1C, which is council appointments, reappointments, and removals from city non-city boards and commissions. And that brings us to our first presentation, which is Item Number Two. I think we're chief. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, and Council John Heilmann, Fire Chief, City of West Sacramento. And I'm here tonight to provide a brief informational presentation on a smartphone application that the Fire Department's hoping to roll out very soon, and it's called Pulse Point. And I'll start with a one-minute video, kind of gives a little news clippings of how Pulse Point has worked.
And from California tonight, a reunion between a man who nearly died and the man who saved his life.
It was an emotional reunion for two men after an off-duty firefighter saved the life of a cardiac arrest victim.
Cardiac arrest can happen anytime, anywhere, and a lot of times, anywhere is a public place.
A new app that could save the lives of people who suffer heart attacks in public.
Is that just people trained in CPR to nearby cardiac arrest cases?
Pulse Point is a smartphone app that helps connect people who know CPR with victims of a heart attack.
Heroes just steps away, ready to help, doubling, possibly even tripling, the chances of surviving a heart attack.
A room full of smartphones at the ready to help save a life.
I wouldn't be alive right now if it wasn't for Scott's fast acting.
You're not going to believe how that man's life was saved. It was all thanks to an app.
So basically, Pulse Point is an application that can be downloaded by anybody, and it alerts the person who downloads the application to anybody requiring CPR within a quarter-mile radius of where their location is. The bystander can respond and start CPR. It was developed and created, and it's only in public places, too. It's not private residence. It was created by two fire chiefs who were having lunch in a deli. Somebody went into cardiac arrest at a neighboring business, and they didn't realize it until their fire engine showed up. And they thought, you know, we could have been doing CPR while the engine was responding, but they didn't have any notification. So they developed this program. Sacramento County has rolled out the program. They rolled it out in January. City of Davis and UC Davis rolled out the program over a year ago, and it's been very successful. And we're excited to bring it here to West Sacramento and Yolo County. The launch of the program, we're going to hopefully come back to you end of April, sometime in May. The application works in conjunction with dispatch, so there's some configuration that needs to happen there. We'll get an exact date real soon. But we'll come back to council. We'd like to do a two-minute street CPR demonstration, download the applications, and go from there. You know, we're really hoping that, you know, we can save a life here in West Sacramento utilizing this application. There is a cost. There's an initiation fee, and there's also a maintenance fee. Those will be absorbed through the YMSA, so there will be no cost to the City of West Sacramento. We'll do a rollout here at West Sacramento, a rollout for Yolo County, and we're excited about it. We just wanted to let you know what's coming. At this point, I'd like to answer any questions or concerns or suggestions you might have.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions? Mr. Jannison?
Yeah, just a quick one. So, the people that are basically volunteering to do CPR, is there, do they have to be certified, or how do they get qualified to even be on the app?
So, it's actually, it's called Street CPR, and it's basically chest compressions to the tune of staying alive. It takes maybe 30 seconds to two minutes to actually teach. You can, when you download the application, you can actually be taught it off the application. But the concern that was out there was, what if somebody shows up and has no CPR experience? And the answer that's been given to that is, at least trying to do something is better than doing nothing. If we get, you know, half the citizens of West Sacramento with the application, hopefully, you know, 10 people show up, a few of them will be fully CPR certified. So that's kind of the thought process there.
No, I think it's a great program. I look forward to doing whatever we can, as far as trying to save a life.
Appreciate it. Appreciate your support.
I think it fits in with our safety and our innovation, and kind of ideas and initiatives as a city. So, thank you for the work on it.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Now, this brings us to the consent agenda. I want to ask if you'd like to pull any items. We do have a memo from our city manager on Items 5 and 8, that those will be coming back to us at some point, and if you wanted to speak on that briefly. And then we do have one request to speak on one item.
Just on the two grant applications, 5 and 8, we'd like to go ahead and meet the deadline to apply for those grants, but then be able to come back at the April 6th meeting with additional financial impact information. And if the council then decides at that time that the price tag's too high, we could withdraw our application. But we would like to meet the March 25th deadline.
Great. We do have a request to speak on Item Number 3, Mr. Mark Coulson. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, Mr. Manager. My name's Mark Coulson. It's my privilege to stand before you this evening as President of the West Sacramento Firefighters Association. I'm here tonight specifically in support of the Agreement for a Successor Memorandum of Understanding between the Firefighters Association and the city. I would also like to take this opportunity to express our thanks and appreciation on behalf of the association to both the council for your patience and support throughout this process, as well as to city staff, particularly Mr. Phil Wright and his staff, for their patience, their thoroughness, and their transparency throughout this endeavor. Mr. Wright and his staff were consistently willing to meet, often with little or no advance notice, in order to explore ideas and engage in productive dialogue. This willingness ultimately facilitated our ability to arrive at a positive resolution. And while this was a lengthy and at times arduous process, at no point was it acrimonious or anything other than professional and respectful. And I believe that that bears mentioning, because it's a testament to the caliber of professionals that we get to work with here, and call our colleagues in West Sacramento. In closing, it is our belief that the agreement that we've arrived at strikes the appropriate balance between fairness and fiscal prudence, and we hope that you share this view. Thank you again for your support of the Firefighters Association and the Fire Department at large. We look forward to continued collaboration and opportunities to be a growth factor in our great city here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coulson. All right. I guess no other items were pulled, and no other questions.
Seven.
Seven?
I have a question.
All right. Mr. Kristoff has a question on Item Number 7, and that question is...
Cindy?
Item Number 7. It's Consideration of Classification Description Salary and Benefit Schedule for Parks and Recreation Business Manager. I think Mr. Kristoff has a question.
Oh, question, Cindy.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Sorry.
Little disjointed today.
It's okay.
The question I have is, why wasn't this brought forward to the commission for their consideration? I mean, that's...
The Parks Commission?
Yes.
That's a very good question. I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if that's standard protocol for the city to have positions ran through your commissions or not. I'd have to defer to either our city manager or our city attorney, because I apologize, I don't know the process. I was under the understanding that that is within your purview, and...
Well, it looks like we're, we're sort of consolidating your department a little bit, by one person. And I just thought it would be appropriate that the Parks and Rec Commission would at least have heard this, so that, you know, they can make a determination. I mean, I realize they don't have the authority to make determinations as far as people are concerned. But at the same time, workloads or anything else like that, that's in your bailiwick. But, you know, at the same time, I thought that the commission would at least have heard about this item. It's okay. I mean, it's, I mean, it's not that I want to fight over an agenda item over that, but I mean, it's, I've got a lot of confidence in you, and I got a lot of confidence in what the city manager wants to do. But, I mean, I think that, you know, our boards and commissions are there for a reason. And it's not just because, oh, we won a volleyball game here, or whatever it is. They look into some substantive issues and that sort of thing. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could, we haven't taken these personnel issues like that to commissions in the past. If that's something you'd like us to look into, but I don't think that level of micromanagement would be appropriate for commissions. But if that's an issue the council would like to explore, I think it would bog down our process. And, well, that's an appropriate role for our advisory commissions. It just hasn't been done in the past.
All right. Thank you.
Right. So, entertaining a motion on the consent. Moved by Mr. Johannison.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kristoff. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, that was all of us. It passes unanimously. That brings us to Item Number 13, on a regular dinner. Thank you, Ms. Tuttle, which is, Consideration of City Council Resolution 16-9, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fiscal agent agreement, a bond purchase agreement, an escrow agreement, and a continuing disclosure agreement, and authorizing the issuance of special tax refunding bonds, approving the form of the official statement to the distribution thereof, and authorizing other actions related to community facilities, District Number 27, Bridge District. Good evening.
Wow. Good evening. I'll be briefer than that title. I am, you've seen a lot of these refundings, so I'll just say a couple things about it. One issue is the level of savings. It's over 20% net present value savings. So it's more than we've ever gotten from any other deal, and that's largely because at the time, the bonds were issued in 2010. Market conditions were terrible during the height of the recession, and so that's why the savings are so high. The other issue is the use of the proceeds. We're proposing to convert the savings into new money for projects in the Bridge District. And we're doing that because in 2010, when the council authorized 125 million in bonding capacity for CFD 27, the idea was that you'd issue multiple bonds over the life of the project, and you'd basically do so whenever there was, number one, a need, and, two, the capacity to do so. So, we're going to be doing that with the, with the savings, generate about 2.5 million for projects. And then, thirdly, we're likely going to go to market next week, try to capture, you know, the interest rate environment. It's very favorable right now. So, with that, we just need you to move the items, so that we can move forward with the bond documents.
Any questions?
We've done enough of these now, where we're getting to trust this guy.
Well, thank you for the presentation, and I'll entertain a motion on this item.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Johannison, seconded by Mr. Kristoff. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to Item Number 14, which is an update on city innovation efforts. And I believe, Mr. Robinson, good evening.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to describe how staff is responding to the council's strategic plan direction to use the tools of innovation and technology to provide improving service for the community. I'd like to start by providing a little background on the city's innovation and technology work, after which I'd like to walk through quickly a case study of how our process improvement works. And then finally, I'll walk through the projects that we're proposing in the innovation and technology space for 2016. By way of background, really, looking back, the city's incorporation was the big bang of the municipal innovation and technology field in West Sacramento, because everything, everything changed at that point. And that event is still reverberating through, you know, what the council does and what the, what the staff does. In the city's first years of existence, everything that the council did, and that the staff did, was innovation by default, because the city had never governed itself as a municipal corporation before that time. And over the years, a lot of the standards and the behaviors that were established initially when the city was new have been carried forward by council and staff. So, you know, a results orientation, and a willingness to take prudent risks, and a valuing of nimbleness over bureaucracy is something that's been carried through successive councils, and really has facilitated a lot of the outsized accomplishments that the city's been able to achieve, and facilitated the ambitious efforts that are underway today, such as bridges, and downtown riverfront streetcar, and a whole bunch of other projects that you're aware of. The council's approach to innovation has also permeated the organizational culture of the city, of the staff themselves. And really, through multiple city managers over the years, there's been a really consistent sense of being supported when staff wants to undertake an innovation that will help improve service delivery to the community. So, the organizational culture that was established a long time ago that supported innovation is still alive today, and there's innovations going on all the time. We've summarized some of those, and there's many, many more. It was actually really interesting to ask the question, realize how much was going on. We had to pick some. So those, those are in attachment number one to your report. And I would just point out again, that those, those are only emblematic of a whole stack of other, other things that are, that are going on at the city by way of innovation. But that's, that's happening organically. And the strategic plan direction that you gave us was to put extra emphasis on that, and to specifically go forward and try and improve, improve those efforts even more. So, you know, one of the ways we do that is through process improvement. So briefly, to give you an example of how that works, we've had the opportunity to learn some techniques from the Denver Peak Academy, which is essentially, you know, in our view, you know, one of the best teachers of lean process improvement as it applies to local governments. And we've been able to get that training for free through a relationship with the state. I think the mayor was on a panel for them at one point, and, and they are thanking us by giving staff free training. So, thanks to them, thanks to the mayor. We're enjoying that. And they've, they've taught us these techniques that we're, that we're applying. So one of the, one of the applications, and this was actually, we had gone to a training before, so before the free training happened, was to the special events permit process. And just briefly, you know, over the, over the years, that's, you know, that's, you're aware, that's a process where if you want to have a special event of a certain number of people, or certain characteristics, if there's alcohol being served, or parking, then you need a special event permit. And those permits, that process, by its nature, was fairly unwieldy, because multiple departments needed to review it, and there were different, different conditions, and sometimes one department would need to weigh in, and the other wouldn't. So, it was by its nature unwieldy, but over the years, the responsibility for managing that process had moved around a little bit, and staff had been shifted, and there was kind of an accretion of techniques. So there were, there were spreadsheets, and PDFs, and phone calls, and all kinds of different things that had kind of built up. And by, you know, 2013, the process had, process had become really quite slow. So, the average turnaround time at that time for one of these permits was over six weeks, from the time for someone submitted to the time they got their permit. In 2014, the Parks Department took over sole responsibility for managing the process, and they invited the city manager's office and the IT Division to work with them on a process improvement effort. And using one of the... process improvement effort, and using one of the techniques, you know, that we ultimately that were now being trained on by Denver Peak Academy, we took their process and basically laid it out step by step in sticky notes, using standard-sized sticky notes on a piece of butcher paper. And just to be illustrative, the process as it existed in 2013 took nine feet of sticky notes to lay out in that way. It was really, really complicated, and we discovered there were redundancies, there were sort of endless loops, there were things which, by no one's fault, just by accretion had happened, that were slowing down the process a lot. So, we took that opportunity to kind of pull out some of those steps and test some things, and we basically did a new process map using the same methodology that was three feet long, using the sticky notes. And that's just, you know, the length of the process map doesn't tell anything, except it is illustrative that we were able to take out a lot of redundant steps. And those changes went into effect in late 2014, so we were using that technique, or Parks was, throughout 2015. And after, you know, at the end of 2015, staff had processed 123 of those applications, and the average time to process those was down to three or four weeks. So, we were able to achieve a 50% reduction in time. And, you know, the benefit of that is, you know, multiple, because it creates a better experience for the public when they want to have an event, and in addition to that, it saves the city time, because staff can be doing other things besides, you know, wrangling this process. And, you know, it should be noted, it's that this process is great for morale, because everybody on the staff wants to provide great service, and they want to do a great job. When they know they're working on a process that's troubled, it's tough on them. So, it feels good to get in there and fix that and then, you know, deliver better service. And the whole thing is very low cost, because you're essentially paying for, you know, sticky notes and staff time. So, a very low-tech but high-return-on-investment-type activity. And we really think, you know, that process is emblematic of how we'd like to do innovation and technology work going forward. So, what we want to do is, for a given challenge, find the appropriate blend of high-tech and low-tech type approaches to solve whatever the problem is, given the constraints that we have. So, in that particular example, there is going to be a technology piece, because now, having done the process improvement, Parks is going back and working with the IT division on having a customer-facing, computerized interface, so it'll smooth the process out even more for applicants, so we less need to visit the city, and they can do more from their phone or from their computer. So, we started with a process improvement. We augmented that with some technology. So, attachment three then to your staff report is the work that we want to do going forward, and I'll just go briefly through those projects. They're divided into two parts. We have a little conversation and a discussion in the staff report. We're trying to differentiate between projects that are sort of purely technology, purely innovation, and some of them are both innovation and technology. So, we split the projects out. The ones that are sort of low-tech innovation-type projects are, you know, one, we want to have our innovation team work on a specific budget for how to recommend, recommended budget for how to utilize the funds that are already in the council-approved budget for innovation. So, some possible ideas for that are startup money for new innovations that require, you know, some kind of investment to get going, small financial compensation for staff that come up with amazing innovations, training materials, things like that. So, we'll come up with a plan and recommend that to the city manager. The second idea there, we'll probably come up with a better name for that. We're calling that the Idea Expressway, but it's essentially a friendlier and more supportive version of the television show Shark Tank, where people from anywhere in the organization would be able to come to the innovation team, pitch their idea for an innovation, and potentially have that recommended to the city manager for either a recognition for some startup money, or, you know, if nothing else, then, you know, a high five for coming up with an interesting idea. Also, we want to do more of the internal process improvement than I mentioned before. We've got staff that have now had the opportunity, four staff members and another one about to go to the Denver Peak Academy training. It's a one-week training, which results in sort of the equivalent of a Denver Peak Academy black belt, which is a state yellow belt, but it's a good thing. It's the right amount of training to lead one of these process improvement efforts. So, we'll have, at that point, five staff members that have been trained, and we've been testing this out. We've sent teams of two into different groups where we're invited to go work on processes, and that's been working really well. So, we'd like to continue that work and get more people trained. And then, finally, for the innovation part, we want to develop an innovation-specific recognition program, because what can happen is you can have really rewarding and important innovation work that sort of pales in comparison to projects like bridges and roads. So, in our traditional awards programs, it can be hard to get those recognized. So, we're going to try and create a standalone innovation recognition program to call attention to those. And then, just to finish with the innovation and technology projects, we're working on the startups and residents program that you're all aware of, but that's a partnership with the city of San Francisco, city of San Leandro, and Oakland, where we're going to have technology startups come to the city and help us work on civic challenges that we've identified in an RFP that went out. That selection process is basically underway right now. We've done interviews with some firms. We had challenges submitted by the Fire and Police Departments, and we got some really interesting submittals on those, so we think there's going to be some exciting results coming from that. We're going to be working on finding a partner to help us proliferate the software that was developed under Code for America last year, so we'll try and get that up and running in the city and then kind of magnified also across the region. We're going to replace the city's website, and in this case, by we, I mean mostly the IT division, but we're going to, that'll have an updated look and feel to it and some extra features to make it more modern and more useful for the public. And then, finally, IT is going to be working on an online utility bill system that will make paying utility bills online much more convenient for residents. So, we think that should be very helpful as well. So, in conclusion, the council's direction to include innovation and technology and to focus on that and to have, for you to have that in your strategic plan is a useful reminder to staff of the council's ongoing expectation that you want the city to be a leader in innovation and technology in order to continue providing the best possible service to the community, and we look forward to doing that. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, and we also have Robert Miller for our IT division here to answer questions if you have them about the technology piece of this.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Any questions? Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, thanks, Sean. I think this is good, a good start. One of the reasons why we're doing this is to either make the, to better the interaction between the community and the government, and also government efficiencies, allow the government to operate more effectively. So, one of the things I would look forward to is you've got a benefit section in each one of these columns. So, it's really going to be, you know, has a benefit been achieved, and what is really, what does a benefit mean? So, some of these are going to be easier than others. For example, you know, more interactive website, more user-friendly, things like that. You have a customer experience that'll improve, but, you know, there should be some way to measure if you're doing anything, you know, like surveys or something along that line to kind of get to that point. Some of these items will be a little more difficult to show, for example, if you've got a group within the city that, you know, just brainstorming or coming up with ideas and, you know, it's, you have to see what the benefit of that innovation is. Is it a reduction of costs? Is it time spent in getting a permit? You know, is there more of an indirect benefit of just community feeling of doing a good job for the community? So, it's just kind of articulating those a little bit more, so you know you're kind of hitting the mark with these, because it could be, you know, you're creating things and that's nice, but it's, you know, the reason why we're doing this is really to improve our government, create a better interaction with the customers, which are the constituents.
Sure. No, that's a really good point, and actually, some of the, you know, the methodology that we're teaching has, as an important component, kind of identifying the outcomes that we're looking for and how we're going to measure that, so we are going to be paying attention to that as we do these projects.
Okay.
Saul Desma. Welcome back from the East Coast.
Thank you, and I apologize for being late, and I missed the beginning of your presentation, John, but reading through the staff report this week, this was, for me, very encouraging and positive to see the plans you have laid out and the process that's made. I think part of what was always getting in the way of this, how do we incorporate innovation into in-city hall, and it was always this conversation about technology seemed to be leading the way, which is always great, but the part that I really took to heart was around the staff and your embrace, embracing of even process improvement. Innovation is, by definition, just change, or it's around transforming a process or transforming a culture. It's just, that's really the root of what we're talking about, and even manual processes that we have. I'm glad to see that you're embracing that, that culture where employees can feel, I have been doing this for years, and I think I have a faster way and being able to feel comfortable coming forward and moving that, moving the needle a little bit. So, I am very thankful, because it isn't always about technology. Certainly, there are, technology has sped up innovation, because people have found faster ways to do things. I can have my entire staff report on an iPad and not waste paper. It's a little harder to read, but I adapt, and it's quicker for me. But again, it's just one of those things where technology actually aids the process, but the process starts first. So, I just wanted to make sure I lauded that part, because again, we can't always afford technology. It's a, sometimes it's a big investment, but the small investment of time and listening to employees or team members about the way we can do things a little better is important. I also want to echo Mr. Johansson's comments, that with that comes responsibility for all the team, is to understand, and it's probably helpful if you don't have them already have guidelines or targets around what it is you're trying to do and principles around which you do them. And efforts that I've been around, we've always tried to articulate not just your goals and targets about what you're trying to achieve. It could be customer service. It could be simplifying the pain point, simplifying the process, eliminating pain points for team members, unnecessary friction or unnecessary processes that make the process a little clunky is a valuable goal, but it's important to lay that out so that you have something to measure against as you come towards the Shark Tank team, or whatever we're calling it. But the other part is principles, and that is how you're going to go about this. I think that's an important part we miss sometimes. We have a very cool culture here in West Sacramento on how we get things done, but we don't do it climbing over each other. We don't do it in spite of somebody. We don't, it isn't meant to, you know, say somebody's not doing their job. It's not about that. It's about how we can be better for our city, how we can be better for our residents to make life a little easier for them, and that's an important part of how you go about making these changes. I think sometimes the culture can go a little too rampant, and, you know, there's a risk of that, but it's always important to kind of stay true to what it is and who we are as a city. So, again, I applaud this effort, and I really enjoyed reading through the various projects you have going on, so thank you for the update.
And I agree with my colleagues. I am grateful for, it was really helpful for me to see the number of projects, because I knew about some of them, but not all of them, things that have happened in the past, just to have the history, but then also to look forward, because I, it really does look to me that there's, it's innovation and empowerment together for the teams here and also for citizens. So, I think that, that's, I think, what we were trying to capture when we talked about an innovative city, is that staff members here can make changes that are necessary for the process improvement, but that also, when citizens come forward and also have suggestions, and I think that's also captured with this work plan. So, thank you for lining it out, and it's actually tremendous work, and there's a lot going on in this, more so than I was aware, and even more so than I think I was expecting. So, thank you to you for the leadership on this project.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks so much. We'll look forward to the, I think you're coming back at some point and giving us another update at some point.
Yes.
Okay.
I love you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And that brings us to item number 15, which is consideration to authorize recommendations for immediate bus route changes, midterm route modifications for public input process design. Good evening, Ms. Cortez. Good to see you again.
Good evening, council members. Thank you so much. My name is Anna Cortez, and I am a senior analyst with the Department of Public Works. City and YCTD staff have collaborated on this particular item. In 2016, the council identified the creation of a public transit strategy as one of its strategic planning priorities. Tonight, we speak on one element of this strategy, which involves our regional bus provider and partner, Yolo County Transportation District, YCTD. Specifically, we recommend immediate actions or activities that we can implement soon after we have your approval. We also recommend future bus service modifications that benefit from both public input and time for adequate planning, partner engagement, and execution. In summary, tonight, we ask for three approvals. Number one, approval of changes to Route 35 and 39 that involve elimination of stops and trips. Number two, approval of midterm implementation ideas which will be shared with the public and include decreasing time of travel, creating a park-and-ride, use of alternative corridors, promotion of smartphone applications, and engagement of new transportation partners. And number three, we ask for approval for the public meeting schedule for March 28, April 4, and April 18. Mr. Basset, Executive Director of YCTD, will speak on the specifics on these actions. As directed by council and city manager, we have presented this information to the Transportation, Mobility, and Infrastructure Commission. This item was reviewed on March 7. Commissioner Guerrero, who represents the YCTD's Advisory Committee, was in attendance at this meeting. During the meeting, one member of the public expressed concerns about eliminating the Route 35 loop, specifically the Stone Gate Drive and Village Parkway loop. After the presentation and public comment, the commission supported elimination of the 8:40 PM trip for Route 35 and changes to Route 39. The commission also welcomed the suggested public input process. Mr. Basset will provide more details on each of these recommendations. Any questions?
Any questions at this point? Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Basset.
Good evening, Mayor Proten, members of the city council, and I hear this thing can go up if you push the button right, so this is good news. I'm Terry Basset, Executive Director of the Yolo County Transportation District, and I appreciate going before you at this time. Don't panic, I'm not going to hit you with a lot of slides, but if you could scroll down to the first one involving a map, that would be great. Those are just narratives that are in your city council staff report. Okay, starting with this, this is what the Route 39 currently does. It's a commute hour-only route from the Southport area into downtown Sacramento, but it also has stops in the Stone Park area as well, and a lot of people tend to informally park-and-ride around 15th Street going into downtown. We reverse that in the afternoon, four trips in the morning, four trips in the afternoon. If you'll notice, the furthest south we go is into the Bridgeway Lakes area. So, if you could flip to the next slide, please. What we're proposing to do in the relatively near future is to eliminate the southern loop of the Bridgeway Lake area, because the ridership is not that substantial, and also part of the circle that goes around, I think it's Golden Gate Drive. The reason we're doing this is we're trying to make the service more efficient. This is just the first step. There's a much bigger step going on that we'll discuss in a second. So, those are the changes for the 39. Next slide, please. The 35 is a route that runs seven days a week, more on weekdays than weekends. It connects at the West Sacramento Transit Center, right across the street from here, where people can transfer from other Yolo Bus buses and the Route 35. As you'll notice, it serves the Bridgeway Island area, as well as areas just east of the Southport Town Center, and it uses Village Parkway as a way of getting around before it winds its way eventually back to Jefferson Boulevard, and then it serves the Stone Park Westacre area. That used to be served by two routes years ago, but we eliminated those two routes from down there, so the 35 was meant to be partially that replacement. So, next slide, please. What we're proposing to do is get rid of the dash line in the near future for now, and let me emphasize the reason why is it's only about 5% of our ridership, yet it's a substantial amount of our miles and running time. We can save six or seven minutes per loop by not doing that, which will do tremendous benefit by allowing our buses to be much better in terms of on-time performance. The on-time performance of this particular route is not necessarily good. Now, the one person that showed up at the Transportation, Mobility, and Infrastructure Committee will be impacted by that red route, and she's asked that we delay doing that change until the bigger changes are undertaken, which we'll talk about now. Regarding the bigger changes, the big one is on the Route 39, changing the concept. Instead of having a long circuitous route, actually have a shorter route, running more frequently, and hopefully having a much shorter running time for the passengers. But the big difference is it'll... But the big difference is it'll involve park and ride activities. A lot of our riders currently are used to the bus going down their street and hopping on the bus. This concept will involve people getting to a location which has not yet been finalized in the Jefferson, Lake Washington area where they could congregate, they could get there by bicycle, they could carpool, they could walk there. And the idea is to have more frequent service. Instead of four trips, we may have five, six, or seven trips in the morning and back in the afternoon. And the goal of this is not to punish the riders, it's just the opposite. It's to provide more trip opportunities and motivate a higher level of interest in ridership and going into downtown. In the perfect world, we'd love to go down lots of streets to everybody's house to pick them up and take them to their destination, but then there's the reality of trying to make the service efficient and attractive enough to motivate more riders. The other changes that we're going to be considering are changes to the Route 35 beyond that interim change, and the intention of those changes is again, to try to make some improvements, perhaps reduce the number of bus stops, do what we can to speed up the route to make it more attractive to our bus riders. A key component to all of this are three workshops that Anna mentioned to you already, one in the end of March and two in the beginning of April, where we can receive testimony regarding the midterm changes. Regarding the short-term changes, as I explained to our board, we have authorization to make changes that affect less than 25% of the ridership or 25% of the miles, you know, doing it without a public hearing or workshop. But that's up to the city, whether or not you want us to have the workshop include even the short-term changes as well. But as of this point, it's the city's call, how you'd like to proceed with that.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions?
I'll have some results. Do we have public comments?
We don't have any requests to speak.
Do you have a mic?
No, Mr. Ledesma.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Protem. I just want to make a few comments. First, I want to thank Terry and the staff for working so hard on this. This is for the, first of all, and thank you for your effort in coming out tonight and working on this, and also thanks to the staff, our Public Works Department continuing to work with YCTD on evaluating our service. This was, for the rest of the council, this was a result of, as you recall, last year in the wake of some, the budgeting issues we had with, with the YCTD, we decided to take a real hard look at our service. And the imperative was around improving service for ridership, trying to improve, increase ridership, and making sure that the bus service is doing all it can to provide a viable alternative for folks to get to and from the workplace, especially in the downtown area, either in downtown Sacramento and, or along the riverfront. That was becoming the imperative. Some complaints that we were getting about the timeliness of the routes, getting to places on time in downtown is becoming, becoming very hard to achieve, given you saw the layout of the routes. And so I, again, I want to thank YCTD especially for being open to our suggestions about how we can look to increase ridership, because it is very important for us that we start to lay this groundwork going forward, the way the city is growing, especially, it may not seem as though we're trying to do it down in Southport where the changes are, but it's important because of what we're trying to do up in the Riverfront District and our urban center, as well as what's happening in downtown Sacramento. Transit has become a kind of the hot button issue in the region. Everybody is talking to, talking about it because frankly, our downtown is becoming what we've always aspired it to be and an active place both in Sacramento and what we're doing in the Riverfront Bridge District and the Washington neighborhoods. We are getting new residents there, we hope to get new workplaces there, and there will be more events there, and that means more people moving cars through there. And we need to find viable ways of getting, moving people from their homes, which is relatively close, four to five miles from, as the crow flies, from the Southport Town Center to, to our downtown, and then the ability to get across the one bridge, by old bridge where the bus crosses. So that's been behind this, and I want council to understand the motivation and why this is important, because we are laying the groundwork for how we are beginning to move people. Transit, the Yolo Bus is an important part of how we get people to and from the workplace, makes us a absolute, will continue to make us an absolute great place to work, live, and play, if you can get to the places you need to get to in an efficient manner. It's become obvious in looking at the routes that while some people do use it, and I applaud those folks, I appreciate the one resident who has been very vocal about Route 35 about that, because she uses the bus. And I don't blame her at all, and, and I appreciate her input on wanting to keep the route near where she lives. The reality is that that route also causes us to miss, as Mr. Bassett pointed out, have a six to seven minute window to getting back on time, and then with, especially between the 7:30 and 8:30 hour for whoever lives in the Southport, around the Lake Washington, Jefferson area, there's quite a bit of congestion there that we also lose time. And it's important that we find ways to kind of mitigate that and find ways to move, to be able to provide that consistent on-time performance that people are gonna, are going to want and they can begin to use it. It doesn't make any sense for somebody to take a bus that takes them between 35 and 40 minutes to get, with a transfer, to get down downtown Sacramento, and maybe in their car it takes 20. I even heard from one person who said the same thing, it could take 30 to 40 minutes to get to downtown, I could ride a bike in 20. Well, riding a bike is a great transit alternative, we welcome that as well, but not everybody can ride a bike, and some people do need the bus service, and that's what this is about. And we do want to make, look at these changes soon. I'm listening to residents about how we can stage these in places so the impacts aren't there. I want to make sure I'm sensitive to that. But this is about pushing our bus service forward in a way that makes it so that people can find a way to get to a local shopping center, where we're looking at possibly a park and ride, either by biking, biking or walking along the New Clarksburg Branch Trail to get there, riding the bike, parking it, and being able to catch a bus that will leave every 15 minutes, every 20 minutes on time and get to somewhere it's supposed to be on time. I think that would be a viable alternative, which is kind of the forward-looking model we're considering. So again, I just want to thank staff for continuing to work of this. This is going to be a work in process. I want to bring up another point. This, this isn't without hearing some feedback. We have these public meetings, which is to gain, I look forward to getting more input and more formal testimony, as the director called it. But we've already had some input from this, and that's basically from ridership numbers we get, that the people who are riding it, they aren't getting, they aren't getting on the bus as much as they probably could because of the timing issues. But it came from another source, which the director informed me about, was when the Fix 50 issue came up a year and a half ago, and that was two years ago, right? I'm trying to remember when that was. And we adjusted bus lines anticipating traffic snarls on 50. We basically created a park and ride almost situation for the bus, more bus service in Southport, moving up to right here at the transit center on, on West Capitol and shuttling people back and forth across the bridge. From the feedback I heard from staff, there was a lot of interest in that, a lot of people moving, but Fix 50 sort of didn't pan out to be the apocalypse that it was foreseen, so everybody sort of went back to their normal habits. But the ridership was there, and so we stopped the service. But it told me that it could, that's a viable option, that's the feedback, unintended feedback we received. And so that kind of thing, that's what we kind of came back to as a model for could we, could we make this a more permanent thing? And I welcome council to sort of chime in on this because it would mean some changes in how we approach Southport. We hadn't, I think one of the things I've learned is park and rides are, aren't something we anticipated for the Southport Town Center is one area we're looking at. But it is something that I think, it's already being done in certain parts of our city when they drive up to 15th Street and park near the fire station and take the bus to get a quicker access across the river. So I, the behavior is already there. People don't want to wait and go around the several loops that are in Bridgeway Lakes, Bridgeway Island, or in the Southport and the Village Parkway, and then make their way up Jefferson. I think that's what we were learning. So again, this is, I welcome council's feedback on this. This is a bit of work in progress, just because we get it right on this one, we may learn new things in the next several months that I think we have to be open to this. This is the new, the new normal, I think, for the transit district and how we're able to adapt to changing circumstances and new routes. The most notable one that's coming up is the extension of Village Parkway, how we adapt to that and the traffic patterns and the commute behavior that comes out of that. So I'll stop there, and just want to again, thank you to staff, to our city staff and to YCTD, YCTD staff. We, they, we are meeting, they are meeting monthly to kind of keep this initiative going, so I want to thank them for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledesma. Mr. Johannesen?
Yeah, I don't, Terry, can you come back up? Maybe just. Thanks a lot for this, and I appreciate all the work that Councilmember Ledesma has put into this and the cooperation with the Yolo County on this. It's a tough issue. One of the thoughts that's occurred to me that, you know, when you do, you're going more toward park and ride, you know, you have the folks either that don't have cars that aren't going to benefit from that, or you're going to have neighborhood impacts for informal park and rides. So as part of the plan, if there is a movement more toward a park and ride model, there's got to be some consideration of the folks that don't have cars. So I'm not sure about the ridership, you know, if, you know, 100% of people that ride the bus also have a car, or the reason why they're riding the bus is because they don't have a car, I mean, in which case a park and ride means nothing because they can't, they can't park, you know, they can ride, and that's about it. So, and/or folks that have limited mobility too, you know, and there's no real shuttle that will get them even to a park and ride space or the next stop. So that's kind of the one of the things we're working on here, is we try to bring transportation to everybody. And to get even, like you said, it's tough to go into the neighborhoods and expect to be picked up at your doorstep and take right to your location you want within two minutes. The more you do that, the longer it takes, and, but we do want to make sure we're not leaving segments of people out when we do these kind of bus routes. It's confusing enough for people that have their lives around a bus stop that moves, but then the next, what do you, how do you accommodate, make reasonable accommodations to those folks?
Councilman Johannesen, one idea that we're kind of floating around internally is offering significantly reduced or even free rides for people that are willing to carpool using their vehicle to pick up others in their neighborhood and take them to the park and ride facility. Relative to serving disabled or other people that cannot make use of a bus that's remotely located, we still have the option of having the paratransit vehicle pick up someone that's either wheelchair confined or have other limitations. The Route 35, we're still going to propose that it still serves some of the areas that it currently does. We're just going to try to find ways to speed it up and get rid of trips that are very inefficient and just try to focus on the core part of the ridership.
I mean, I agree, you've got to do that, because if it takes two hours to go from here to downtown, you can walk backwards that fast.
Yeah.
You know, so it's, you've got to have the efficiencies to allow people to do it. Of course, when the arena gets in, it's, it's going to take, you know, two hours to drive there anyway, so, you know, you want to have something to, you know, people can get in and park and ride at the Nugget Shopping Center or whatever. But it's really kind of the, it's not so much people that are disabled that would need paratransit, but it's people that, you know, have got arthritis in their hip. And walking, one block is okay, but walking two blocks is out of the question. So you have that whole range that you've got to consider between someone who's totally disabled that needs paratransit versus someone who doesn't have a car that can't make it that two blocks or three blocks. And we're not going to be able to answer tonight, but that's, I guess, the challenges of running this kind of public transportation.
And another concept, we've, it's big in the industry, everyone's trying to figure it out, but transportation network companies such as Uber and Lyft, whether they have a good role in doing the first and last mile. So we're exploring what the options are, but we're sort of all babes in the woods. We've got to make sure we do something that offers safe, reliable connections.
Yeah, I appreciate it, thanks.
I don't, I don't have another question for any of the staff members, but I, I do agree, Mr. Ledesma, that it's, it's good that we are able to think about how to modify, I think, and to be reasonable in doing that. And it is possible that there could be more ridership if we make change, and then there's more demand. And then, I mean, there are other variables in the system, as, as you mentioned, Mr. Johannesen, the, the arena downtown could, could change things and we could have more grid block, but we also could see parking prices increase. And so that's why this 15th Street pickup, people might say, hmm, let's see, it's going to cost me, instead of paying $25 to park, I can pay six, because I can leave my car and hop over for $3 each way. So I mean, those things, those things we have to be thinking about and looking at, and that's why I think this, this is, this is a, this modification actually kind of tests some new things, maybe increases ridership, look, we look at things differently. I think this Uber, Lyft connection possibility, we're just, we'll just have more, more and more opportunities to get our transit system working and that can work for folks. And I, I commend the, the work just even trying to move this forward. So thanks to you for your work on the district.
You're welcome, and, and I appreciate the thought on that. It is very much connected to the previous agenda item, which is around innovation, because at this, we've considered the bus service for so long as just, you know, just part of the fabric and it ran the fixed route. But, you know, the disruption in our, in our communities has come around, things like Uber and technology and how people move around. Even bicycling has, has been a disruptor, because we've amended our entire master plan around bicycling and how we can move forward. And, and so I think that the openness that staff showed towards this, and let's, let's not kid ourselves, the amount of resources we've put towards the bus service, it's not, it's, it's a, it's a big asset. And we, we've invested a lot into our bus service, and it's up to us to make it work for the community and not so much just be, you know, sent on the sidelines while a major innovation in transit occurs. It has to be part of it, and I think that's the part that we're coming to grips with. And again, I don't see this as, as a kind of one-time change and we move on. This is how we should be approaching it with all the areas that you talked about. And I appreciate, Mr. Johannesen, your comments on, we don't want to leave segments behind. It's been one of the principles, at least we've laid out, we can't, there's areas that depend on it to get to the job or get to school or get to whatever, we have to consider that. But in the Southport area, what we're finding was, well, the, most of the commuter lines are the ones that were being affected by the timeliness, for all the reasons you laid out, both of you laid out, because there's more people there and with the arena coming. The more important part that I worry about in this is, is not the riders today, we hope to gain more riders today, but it's actually the riders tomorrow. The folks are really going to depend on the transit system, on the people we're planning for. I think we mapped today the Bridge District, we had another mapping, I think, it was Bridge District, for the next phase of, of construction to go on there. And, and there's more coming, especially with the arena coming. Those buses start down here, end up down there, up there in downtown. They got to show up on time or those people won't use transit. And that's part of the motivation here too. So just to kind of close the loop on that.
Any other discussion? There is a request that we approve the immediate bus route and midterm changes and, and the recommended public events, so there is an action before us tonight.
I would approve the recommended action.
Moved by Mr. Kristoff.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Ledesma. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Sounds like it was unanimous. Thank you very much. And Mr. Bassett, while you're here, I wanted to thank you, I think on behalf of our council, for the work you did with us to recognize Mr. Lowell when he passed. We appreciated that outreach and working with our staff, and thank you for working on that plaque.
We have a plaque for the order.
Thank you for ordering it. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you.
That brings us to council calendar. Ms. Berlin?
Good evening, Mayor Protem Sandin and members of the city council. Here are some items from the calendar that might be of interest to you. On this Friday at 10:30 a.m., there'll be a celebration for the community center's fifth birthday. And also, this Saturday, March 19th, there'll be an event at Sam Coons Park, the Big Bark Event, which is focused on providing fun, family-friendly activities for families and their their, and their dogs. That's of interest to you. And then also on April 2nd, will be the Summerfield Park Grand reopening, and that's from 10 AM to 2 PM.
Thank you.
No report other than to add on to Amanda's calendar, the Joey Lopes Park opening. There's saved the date for Friday, June 24th.
Thank you, city manager. City attorney report? No report? Staff direction from council members? Agenda item requests? None? Look for a motion to adjourn?
Is that moved?
Moved by Mr. Ledesma, seconded by Mr. Kristoff. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Right. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, have a good evening.